I just want to take a moment to congratulate our newly-elected board member, Mrs. Valani. Our board member was re-elected, or board members were re-elected, Mr. Alvarez and Mr. Tapalovsky. We look forward to continue working with you. And congratulations to Mr. Russell and Mrs. Tuda on your election as President and Vice President. We have a lot of stuff to do this year, a lot of good things to do for the kids in Linden. And I know that you're going to help me do it, so thank you in advance. Some other things I want to discuss with you. As you know, we're very lucky in Linden because of this board and because we have some really phenomenal teachers and administrators, so we've been doing exchange trips. And we currently have exchange trips group with five different countries: Germany, Spain, China, Italy, and France. So, in light of the recent terror attack in Paris, it has come to my attention that some people were wondering if the board will continue to support student exchanges. We are anticipating going to Paris in April. We're going to Germany, and we go back to Italy next year. It is my opinion and my recommendation that we certainly continue with our exchange trips. The educational value that our students gain from these trips are more than anything they'll ever learn in a classroom, when we're talking about learning from online. I think that if we were to stop sending our kids, I think it sends their own message and they advise that. Having said that, certainly would understand why a parent wouldn't want them, they would get their child. So my view, and I'd like to hear your input, is that if a parent is willing to send their child, then I would be willing to have, make a recommendation to the board to continue without trips. Does anybody have any comments on that topic? I want to be able to give my people the go-ahead to start to continue planning their trips. So Valani?
As somebody who worked in Manhattan, the Royal Flight Center on Island, and had a husband who was hit by a building and lost a lot of friends and neighbors, I agree with you wholeheartedly. If we give in to terrorism, if we give in to fear, they might. So I would wholeheartedly support continuing to go there.
Mrs. Tuda?
I agree with what Mrs. Valani said, and also, it can happen anyway, including home. So, I think we should continue.
Ms. Burks?
I think we also should continue to go there. I think what our children learn and experience over there is something he may never, ever get if we don't allow them to go. So if they have that opportunity within our district for us to send them, I think they should take full opportunity. I support it 100 percent.
Anyone else?
I agree.
I have my direction, thank you. I did make one error. We're going to France in March, we're going to China in March, and Germany in April. So France, China, and Germany this week. And then, you know, we just say, okay, they come to us also. The second item I want to discuss with the board was, we had a parent at the November board meeting during public comments make a request of the board to look into making our district a peanut-free district. And I told that parent that it's something that, you know, we'll do a little research on and that the board would discuss. I want to get back to that parent, and I want to at least be a member of that parent that we discussed this issue. So I asked our head nurse, Joyce Hirsch, to just do a little research for me on what it would mean to be a peanut-free district. I gave copies to you on what she's given me, very informal, and I didn't ask for any informal, I was asking for some informal feedback on what she thought. And if you had a chance to read it, you'll see basically what she's saying is two things. She's saying that for some kids, peanut butter is a very nutritious and economical snack for parents and families to send their kids to school. Second, and she gives you a breakdown of the peanut allergies in our district, where we have 89 of your, that we know of, and we have almost just as many with tree nut allergies. So if we were to consider banning peanuts from the district, then why not tree nuts and everything else? Her recommendation, and I trust her recommendation, is that if we were to make a ban on peanuts, that it does create a false sense of security. And this comes from a father who has a daughter with peanut allergy. We've been very careful since we first found out of teaching her the responsibility of knowing what it is that she is going to eat, to question if something's brought into school, is there peanuts in this? I mean, she, my daughter, she can smell it, I mean, she can smell it from across the room, and she knows it's not good for her. And even for our pre-case students, our younger students may not be able to do that, and our nurses do a tremendous job in informing the teacher, communicating with the parents, communicating with the other parents in the class if they are going to bring things in. So Joyce's recommendation is to not necessarily make a peanut-free district, but to create a food allergy awareness zone, and recommend limiting the amount of food that we do bring in from the outside in for celebrations and things like that. So I would just like, before I act on this and before I talk to the parent who came to our board meeting, I'm going to speak on behalf of the board, I want to be able to hear your input on this.
Well, with Montone, you know, and you know, sometimes some of the food that they give, you know, it's not bad, but I wouldn't know what's in it. But my question would be, are they totally peanut-free?
No.
No.
So if that's the case, and we decided to go that route, then Montone's got to change your complete menu around, right? So that would be very difficult and impossible, right?
Hold on, Attorney Law. It's a policy decision for this Board of Education to decide if you're going to be a nut-free, egg-free, milk-free, X, whatever X is, free district. To the extent that you do not have a policy saying that, then you're not to the extent that you wish it. To become a policy, this board would go to the policy committee, they would draft whatever it is, you would come back to the board and follow your usual customary practice in terms of pop first reading, second reading, and then implementing regulations of media administration's responsibility. So to the extent that you have policies and procedures in place, policies of small peanut, the word policy, dealing with nut, eggs, milk allergies already within every school, which I'm sure you do, this is a fact of life, then that's where that, I'm unaware in this district of this, from my capacity, of any child having a severe enough reaction to warrant any kind of medical intervention. We have, over time, have seen parents come in under the 504 plans or special education IEDs, dealing with the issue of nut allergies and other kinds of allergies, where we've had to deal with some level of accommodation. And they've been implemented on a case-by-case basis, child by child, class by class, school by school. And that's the way we're at. And for you to say you're going to be a nut-free district, that's up to you guys. But once you go down that road, you need to be sensitive to the fact that once you go there, then you're exposing yourself to now, what's the next one on your list? I don't know what's more popular, tree nuts or milk nuts, whatever one is more prevalent. And it becomes really, really problematic enforcement when parents don't comply, when you do it to the children who bring in non-compliant snacks, where you do about mixed, where they manufacture a snack, egg in a plant that has nuts and tree nuts and all the rest of that. It's a very, very tricky thing. So in terms of a policy issue for this board, if there's no policy coming forward, Dr. Obito's, the board has spoken by virtue of what it's doing. So I don't know that, you know, unless, unless you're going to say, yes, we wanted to explore policy.
Do we want to explore it any further? I guess that's basically what I need to know. Do we want to even send this to the committee, or are we okay with?
I think parents have a responsibility.
If your child has an allergy to anything, my grandson has an eye allergy, so it's his mother's responsibility and his father's to make sure that these snacks are provided, they provide the snacks that are appropriate for him, you know? So this way, there's, it's not fair, penalize.
Mrs. Burks?
That's kind of what I was going to say over at school, I know what we've asked the parents to do, is if there is going to be a celebration, have a small box that is written with the child's name, that they can, parent can send in some snacks, so that there are some snacks on hand for that child. If a celebration were to happen, that child would be left out and have a snack.
And our nurses are very good with that.
They are.
Is it that light?
My kids are two that form some of the baby pens, and they have the most bizarre food allergies. They could be, famous name, that's what we always had. Personal responsibility, personal livelihood, just step up to front, you know that you can't have this, the kids have to learn what they can eat, what they can't eat. And taking something like peanut butter away, that has got to be the biggest meal that they, of so many kids eat. And I think nutritionally, that would be unfair to the rest of the day in the public. I wouldn't even want to support.
Yeah, I think the hidden, the hidden issues are even more so. My granddaughter got Play-Doh for Christmas, and my daughter was playing with it, my daughter is gluten-free. All of a sudden, all of a sudden, she starts getting this weird feeling in her hands and stuff like that. Play-Doh has wheat in it, it has gluten. So, not, she'd eat it, but it started to affect her just from being close to it. So I mean, it, you go down a very, as DeTromi said, a very sloppy slope if you start banning things.
I'm happy with that, Mr. Russell.
One other thing, when my girls were in public school, early on in pre-thing, what they would do at that age, because kids are not as responsible, whatever, either teacher had a peanut allergy in the fight, ask before they came back from lunch, wear the snacks, and just have everybody wipe their hands down with gate and wipes.
They'd have peanut-free tables, and there's lots and lots of strategies that you can invoke on a class-by-class, cafeteria-by-cafeteria basis to account. And there are some kids that are extraordinarily airborne allergy to peanuts. And I've had that experience, and it's, that's right, it's, you know, that's becomes a dangerous thing. Be stings, I mean, there's lots and lots of things out there that pose problems. But if you have the processes and procedures in place, you're doing it.
So I'll draft a nice letter to the parent, explain our position, maybe Mark will help you with that. Good. And then last, for public, I mean, we do have some things I need to talk about in the executive session, but the last thing for public was, all of you received a petition? If you don't, if you didn't get it, there's a copy in your phone. I don't need to read this for you, I know you've probably all read it before. And this might be the same as the last thing, this is something we need to decide, is this something that we want to send to the policy committee? Basically, this group of parents is asking the board to consider some sort of policy where students receive a snack break before or after lunch, depending on what time their lunch is served. Now, I have to tell you that I never knew that this was an issue, never thought it to be an issue. I think certainly at the early, in the early grades, our kids do have snacks. Correct me if I'm wrong, I think we do have snacks. So, you know, but this petition was sent to the board, so I want some direction on how you'd like me to handle this petition.
Yeah, I agree totally with you about that. However, I guess I was reading a couple weeks ago in the papers, there's legislature that might actually be doing that, making it, I think, yeah, somehow we got a check on that. I read, I think it was in the Ledger, that one of the bills was, they're trying to get that same thing, where you have to have a break during the day for the kids to snack. So we might, as a group, say, well, it's taking some valuable teaching time away, the kids don't need to eat, but we might have a force out of throats if they do indeed ask it. So that's something just to keep in the back of your mind.
Did you hear anything about that report?
I think, yes, I have, I have not read it. The data is all, you know, can, or the data that they're citing in here is completely accurate. You know, the health, you know, good health and eating and nutritious eating is critically important to success in school. Any study you read tells you that. What the kids eat for lunch is important, what they have for breakfast, if they even have breakfast, all of those things are absolutely true. So it's not a matter of fighting with the data as much as it is, as again, as a policy consideration for this board grappling with competing factors of, we have 43 minutes or X number of minutes per day, per period, and how you carve out 10, 15, or 20, whatever it may be. Whether you do or you don't is up to you guys, how you do it is up to you guys in conjunction with the administration. But it's not something that I would suggest is a knee-jerk reaction thing as much as it is if it's something worthy of exploring, there is the good and bad of everything. And I think you need to give the administration time to explore how you could even do that if it's billable within the system that you have. What are the ramifications of the collective bargaining process, Dr. Biddy, we talked about that? And who oversees kids' eating unless they're bringing it to school? So if I eat Doritos for a snack, that's really a good snack.
Why don't you see if legislation's passed?
That's fine, that's a, that's a policy issue, Mr. Obito, but I'm happy for you to do whatever it is that you want to do. I just think simply saying we're going to ignore it or not ignore it is a different story than saying you may use more information.
Mr. Tapalovsky, again, and Mr. Alvarez?
I was supposed to have a meeting in, I think it was early December, with the Legislative Committee of School Boards, an advocacy meeting, and I believe it, well, it was canceled and it's pushed to a week from this Saturday. So the 16th, I will be meeting with the Legislative Committee. At that point, I will, if it's not brought up, I know Jones, Chris Jones is the Legislative Director of School Boards, and I will ask him directly, but I believe that stuff, I have to go back and look.
Possible bring something back then for the conference?
By the end of January, at the 25th meeting.
Mr. Alvarez?
Look, I have experienced the Jersey Public Schools breakfast in classroom, and the truth of the teacher is a challenge, because the kid gets in at 8:45, and you give them 15 minutes, but there's three or four that they eat at a pace that they're not done within that timeframe. And do you take them away, give them some act away? No, you let them finish. So it's very tough to implement. And, well, I mean, time-wise, that's what I'm saying. So as an administrator, you have teachers that, to have a consensus, what time you say, okay, everything is moving to your table, that's tough, especially with the younger ones. So I think I'm an educator, I look into the instructional time that definitely will take away some valuable time for that.
Mrs. Valani?
Two things. I do, even to this day, send my kids to school with usually a plan of time, an apple or banana that they keep in their locker. And I always have a note for them if they are hungry during mid-morning, or if they missed things, they couldn't finish breakfast. The teachers have always been accommodating with them going out to go grab something, eat a break, and come back, come back in. It's something I would want to look at, because I think it is an issue that I heard from a lot of parents, especially when you get into the first and second grades. Kids even to this, and my kids are in fifth grade, and they come home so ravishingly hungry, and I have four or five kids who come to my house right after school, so it's really costing me a fortune. I would, I would like to look at it. The other thing is, and it's not apples to apples, but in Finland, they actually have a national policy of having a 15-minute break every hour. And again, that's not something I'm advocating we'll be into, but other people do it, so I would want to look at it.
So we'll turn, we'll turn it over to the board.
Say, policy?
To the board.
And then, right, maybe people have something that they want to take first to discussion.
Good. Okay. The rest I have is for executives.
First for executive. Warren, our other, will be here shortly, so we'll just kind of bypass that, keep on going, and when he comes, we'll take a, stop from that and present the audit to us, okay? I was, I mean, trying to come out, and it's cold to come out, and spent his evening with us, our former board member, Mr. Shazala, welcome. Welcome to the meeting, sir. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
I can still take that. During committee, that report next, for executive first, for discussion.
That's up to you guys. There's a matter on for the attorney report dealing with a submigrant at the city. You can act on it now if you don't have any questions, or we hold it for later if we do. I defer to you guys how you want to do it.
Board, hold the session. Questions or anything you want to hold?
What I can, or what I think we can say without being executive is, it's, what we talked about in November in closed session and the offer that we made was accepted.
Just that portion.
At the, just that portion, at the amount the board agreed to.
If you guys don't mind, we'll hold this, we'll do an executive, and we'll come out with that and vote on this issue, okay? So everyone has a chance to know. Curriculum instruction, oh, sorry, you have it, no?
No.
So Curriculum Instruction Committee, Mrs. Viviana?
The Curriculum Instruction Committee, upon recommendation of superintendent of schools and the assistant superintendent, present the following 27 motions to the Board of Education for approval. I do ask that everybody take a look at item number 19 first. This is for the Linden School District Course Description Guide for 2016-17. I would like to make a motion at this time to table this, as there are some adjustments that need to be made to it. I would like to call you for a second.
For the second, I have a roll call to table item 19 to the January 25 meeting.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Viviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Burks?
Yes.
Mrs. Tuda?
Yes.
Mr. Palavis?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Tapalovsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Valani?
Yes.
Thank you. Now for the remaining 26 items. Items 1 through 8 deal with the approval of specialized programs for placement of classified students, determination of out-of-district placements, determination of related services, the approval of payment for related services as per child study team evaluations, adjustments in tuition, the transportation of students, and the approval of speech services for therapy care, LTD. Item 9, amend board action on past CNI reports. Item 10, grant permission for use of facilities and school activities. Item 11, approves district field trips. Items 12, 13, 14, 16, 17, and 18 approve training for district staff. Item 15 appoints the affirmative action team members for the 2016-17 school year. Item 20 approves 2016-17 pre-kindergarten, kindergarten, and teddy program roundup dates. Item 21 approves approval for Chinese New Year festivities on February 11, 2016. Item 22 approves the cost of refreshments for Chinese New Year participants to be paid for by Confucius Classroom Funds. Item 23 grant permission for Cynthia Appelinsky to participate in the Teacher Leadership Symposium from April 29 to May 3, 2016, at no cost to the district. Item 24 grant permission for Justina Steff to conduct a survey with teachers for the King University Masters Program. Item 25 grant permissions for an exchange student to attend Linden High School for a two-week period between January and February 2016. Item 26 approves the pilot of a new science kit in grade 6 at each middle school. And item 27 approves a superintendent's determination and actions taken for all reporting incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying discussed at the November 23, 2015 regular meeting. Mr. President, I move forward on the instruction report and respectfully ask for a second.
Second. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Palavis?
Yes.
Mrs. Viviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Burks?
Yes.
Mrs. Tuda?
Yes.
Mr. Palavis?
I vote yes by abstaining on item number nine, or number nine, item number 20.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Tapalovsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Valani?
Can I change from 1 through 8 and yes to the rest?
Okay, thank you very much. Management and Operations Report, Mrs. Tuda?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Management and Operations Committee, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, presents the following 28 motions to Linden Board of Education for approval. Number 1 is the passing of a Board of Education amendment.
Mrs. Tuda, if I may, 28 is also, can I discuss both now?
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. We are sorry to hear of the loss of Ann Dubisky, who worked for Linden Board of Education for 28 years. Ann started her career as a secretary in the superintendent's office in July of 1957, 1972. She was appointed secretary to the superintendent of schools, and she retired in 1983. Just on Friday, we received some terrible news about one of our most well-respected and esteemed teachers who was just retired, just retired a couple of years ago, Esther Harris, passed away suddenly. Esther worked for Linden Board of Education for 36 years. She started her career in 1975 as an elementary vocal music teacher. She taught vocal music in schools 2, 4, 5, 6, and 9. She touched the lives of thousands of students, thousands of teachers too. Many of our current board members knew her very well. And on behalf of the Linden School District, I'd like to offer our most heartfelt sympathy to their, both of their families, and let them know our thoughts are with them.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Number 2 is a reservation. Number 3, Mr. Menpass, Management Operations Report. Numbers 4, 5, 6, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, and 27 are all appointments. Number 7 is the transfer of staff. Number 8 is to approve the following legal accesses that are listed. Number 9 is the approval for the following reassignment. And number 10 and 11 are to authorize the collection or duration of sick days. Mr. President, I move by this 1 through 28 and respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Viviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Burks?
Yes.
Mrs. Tuda?
Yes.
Mr. Palavis?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Tapalovsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Valani?
Yes.
Okay, just going to deviate off the agenda for a second and go back to the audit presentation. Warren from South Beach, who is here, our auditor, if everyone could please give him a few moments to go over, was it 2015, like?
2015. Hi, good evening. The presentation of 2014-15, filed in December, it was a little bit later this year, there were extra requirements from the State Department of Education on putting attention on fundamental liability report, and by the time they got us the numbers, it was after Thanksgiving, so it was a little bit different process this year. But anyway, if you have the reports in front of you, if you don't have the reports, I'm just going to keep comments about them. You should have received two reports, one's the CAP, one's the management report. I'd just like to go over the management report. As a requirement from you doing the CAP, you have to do a compliance on the four rules and regulations from the US State Department of Education. And they made us file this separate report, and it was around 15 or 16 different compliance areas, administrative procedures, school cafeteria, ASSA, school purchasing, personnel, various different areas we want us to look at. As we come in, we check these areas, I think about 60 to 70 percent of the audit, and here's what you were having, you didn't have findings, you would have recommendations here. I would like to say there are no recommendations in the report this year. Everything that we asked Kathy Ford this year and her staff as far as personnel, vouchers, insurance policies, any kind of purchase orders, any kind of federal and state reports, she was able to provide us with those, and they did read back to the records. So this is a very direct, second here, and there are no comments or recommendations. The CAP report, and this is required by the state too, but it's dictated by the governmental accounting standard board that tells us how to generate these financial statements. There's a lot of information in here, duplication and redundancy. Board members, I always tell, there's, starting on page 82, it's called, see 1, it says, statement of operations, revenue appropriations, and that's the report, or at least the section the section of the report that the board members should be familiar with. It's a detailed presentation of your revenues and expenditures by appropriation and by revenue categories for the entire year. It also acts as a prop loss. And the school, the P and L would do from over what you started the year with 20,509 surplus. You did generate back about almost 1,500, so your surplus didn't go up. So at June 30, 2015, you have 21,999 in fund balance, okay? However, that's all, not all free and clear. There are different components and breakdown of the fund balance at year end. You have an emergency reserve of $123,000 that's only for emergencies. You have a capital reserve over, a little over $9 million that's used for capital purposes for building repairs, major equipment. What you used in the 15, 16 budget right now, you used $3,325. So what do you, do you fund up the budget that we're in, do you use $3,325 for funding the year right now? There's a, what they call excess reserve, excess surplus that's only 2%, that's $2.3 million. You have a reserve for incumbencies. Those are just a little more than unpaid orders that Kathy had at June 30, 2015. She sent out purchase orders that he committed to pay to reserve 20,000 million dollars for that. That's a little over $4 million. You have, there's a Federal Reserve, 117,000 of a federal grant that he said he had to use in the next year's budget, so he set it aside. And your unreserved, your 2% cooperation surplus is 2,153. So you go from 21 million to 2,153. That's free and clear. You could use in your 16, 17 budget that you're going forward. And that's basically about it. If you have any questions on the audit, anything we do, I'll answer any questions if you have a time.
Any questions for members at this time? Warren, I want to thank you again for coming and giving your report. And again, congratulations to Kathy and the finance staff. I know the ladies in the back there, Pam and Tiffany, for all your hard work. Thank you all.
Wish everyone a happy new year and just to thank Kathy for the total cooperation that the board is still in order. And as well, thank you both for the support and we appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you.
The only time I've seen anything where we haven't made changes is because they changed the warrants. Right?
Yeah, exactly right.
So Kathy's always done a great job, and she continues to do a great job. And we really appreciate her. Thank you, Stan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Warren.
Except for this is live.
So going to the Board Ops Committee, Mr. Tapolewski.
The Support Operations Committee, upon recommendation superintendent of schools and business administration board secretary, present the following 18 finance motions and seven facility motions for approval. Finance, items one through six are due of ordinance to the acceptance of the business administration board secretary's certifications as of November 30, 2015. No liability accounts exceed the amount appropriated or over expended. Board Secretary Report for the month of November 2015, authorizations for payments of salaries and supplemental payroll for December 2015, and drill warrants into the amount specified in favor of person's name and list of transfers and adjustments for the month of November 2015. Item seven is the Treasury Report for the month of November 2015. Item eight is the acceptance of the audit report for the 2014-15 school year compared by Sappely Clumie Company Westfield. There are no recommendations for changes. Items nine through 15 accept funds in the amount of $5,000 from the employees of Phillips 66 Bayway Refinery for the purchase of a 3D printer loan and materials and supplies for the process technology program at Linden High School Academy, Science and Technology. $1,000 from Lester Eastwood Jr., Barrington, Illinois, for the Linden High School class of 1965 scholarship fund. $800 from the County Union for the use of district schools for 2015 voting. And rebates from Nardone Brothers baking company, money from the bake company for rebates for items that were bought, I guess.
Not changing, huh?
And $500 from X Unmobile Education Alliance via the Park Avenue LLC, X Unmobile Service Station on East Eggers Road for the benefit of Linden High School. $500 from the state of New Jersey Salvation Administration, representing student reputation, restitution, excuse me, and $51.30 from Ohio File Prints, Inc., Ohio File P.A. Item 16 is to approve the DVD Snyder Kellor to provide replacement plaque as school aid, you know, $2,800. Item 17, as bids is listed, for MacBook Air laptops or equivalent for the 15-16 year. The opening date for those bids was December 15. And item 18 is to approve the enrollment of a student for the 2016-17 school year on a tuition basis under District Policy 5118. And in facilities, item one is to amend board actions on past support operations report. Items two through six are use of facilities that are charged requested by Yulena Horry, principal in high school, J.B. Carroll, principal of Soul Middle School, Ryan Flommer, principal of school two, Andy Caline, principal of school four, and Officer Kuzinski, director of Linden PAL. Item seven is use of facilities at a service charge requested by Dean Madaluna, administrative assistant of New Jersey Golden Gloves. Mr. President, no questions for further discussions. I move items one through 18 of the finance agenda and one of the facilities agenda for approval. Respectfully seek a second.
Any discussion?
I just have one question.
Yes.
Item number 17 for the MacBooks 2,000 units. What are they being used for? Are they replacements, or are they going to?
This is, June will be the end of our initial three-year lease, Mrs. Viviana, so we'll be replacing our first batch. It's a mixture, but our first one to the elementary. And then the seniors, some seniors currently have them and have the option to buy some of those back. We will surplus, not the surplus, but we're going to try and sell the rest.
Okay. Anyone else? And there's a second, so may I roll call, please?
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Viviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Berg?
Yes.
Mrs. Tuda?
Yes.
Mr. Calvis?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Tapolewski?
Yes.
Mrs. Belloni? Yes.
Planning and Policy Committee, Mr. Berg?
The Planning and Policy Committee submits policies for second reading to incorporate new features required by code and law and to elaborate on local district policies. For a second reading, 6163 dot three, policy overall to include more specific information pertaining to use of therapy dogs in the classroom.
Any discussion?
I'd like to move and ask for a second.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Viviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Berg?
Yes.
Mrs. Tuda? Mr. Calvis?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Tapolewski?
Yes.
Mrs. Belloni?
Yes.
Can I go into the special delegate reports? I'm going off the top of my head, so I apologize. Well, we do the state delegate and shop list.
Like I mentioned, I have a meeting coming up on the 16th of January, which has to do with legislature. You may or may not know that the school boards has changed their approach to how things are happening down the track and that they're being more proactive. And that literally is what this meeting was all about. Instead of just reacting to legislature, legislation that comes from assembly people or senators, we are now going to draft and offer and look for sponsors of legislation that benefits school boards. One other thing that did happen, that the governor did sign a bill that makes it easier to research residency. I don't know if you saw that, but now you can check with motor vehicle and find out if the parent or where they reside. So that'll help. There are other bills that are.
Our attendance, obviously, we're all over that. That's where I first heard it from.
Yeah. And there are other bills that have been passed by the legislature and waiting to see whether or not the governor's going to sign them. That concludes my report.
So if we want to look at the other new records, but that's not going to be, that's not the only thing. There's someone who have their address, that they live at a certain address, that they actually live on the completely other side of New Jersey and still say they live here in London.
Well, that's always, that's always. I understand it's just one of, it's one of, it's like an extra tool, just another tool. There's always, I mean, I don't know if you're aware of the fact that, but we had, we have officers that do.
Residency checks.
Yeah, that follow people home and see where they're, or way outside that they are listed residents to see if they leave the house in the morning and things of that nature. So we do diligence if there's a suspected violator. But a lot of times, if people say they don't live there, but when you check, they do.
Union County School Boards?
That was already.
Okay, I'm sorry. So they'll go through now. Anybody for Ed Services yet? So nobody there. Anything else?
The county board meeting is in January. It is at the Westwood. I prefer to see the Westwood High School. According to, you can, the registration for Union County School Board meeting is on, it's available on the Internet. And that's one that board members can register. And you get points.
Ray, why are you being squirming?
Well, I don't know if there's a real square and in, but that's my first meeting.
The 28?
If that's one of the issues.
We're going to executive session first, and then we have to do our other. So motion to go to exec?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Action will be taken.
We'll be returning.
The first one is on the attorney report to give a settlement agreement between the city of Linden and the board of ed.
So move. So move.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Viviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Berg?
Yes.
Mrs. Tuda?
Yes.
Mr. Calvis?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Tapolewski?
Yes.
Mrs. Belloni?
Yes.
The second matter is a walk-on.
Great motion, I saw.
The Linden Board of Education here granted an ice grievance number 101-15/16 for the reasons discussed in executive session. It authorizes that the board's attorney to communicate with the LEA its decision.
So move.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Viviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Berg?
Yes.
Mrs. Tuda?
Yes.
Mr. Calvis?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Tapolewski?
Yes.
Mrs. Belloni?
Yes.
Is there, oh, sorry. I forgot, sorry guys, question. Comments from the board members? I'm going to start bottom. Mr. Alvarez?
No, no comments, but I would like to, dear teacher, I'm listening to the starting times of high school students, how the state is thinking for the research coming out, so maybe I'll just.
Apparently, there's, it's supposed to be a pilot.
Cody, Cody's behind that.
Senator Cody, that's his big thing. I mean, the research shows, well, if you follow research, the research says teenagers really shouldn't start school till like 11. I think the pilots are doing like 9:00 or 9:30 or something like that. The brain-based learning theories are saying that it's better for adolescents and, but vice versa for younger children, that they should start earlier.
That makes complete sense.
Something to consider.
You'd be cutting edge.
We just split session.
Well, you could just go to school second.
Well, no, that's always the argument against it. The argument is all the after-school activity for sports. And of course, we tier, we tier our bussing, too. We tier our bussing, and so if you, well, you can figure it out. You change all the time. You change the high school time, you're changing the elementary time.
Just throw it out there and see.
Sorry, it's something we can look at. Well, we might eventually be mandated to.
Okay.
I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate Ray and Alex on their wins and reelections. I'm getting there. And I would like to welcome Mrs. Belloni to the team and to add more of the stuff that you and I are working together on in the city.
Thank you very much.
Welcome, Teresa.
I would like to congratulate Alex and Ray on their reelection and also welcome aboard Mrs. Belloni and just welcome back to the parents and the students. I hope they have a wonderful vacation.
Oh, I'd like to wish a happy new year to everyone. Welcome, Mrs. Belloni. Congratulations, Ray and Alex. We're coming back and working as a team. And on a second note, I was very proud of our kids. The first week in December, on Friday, they had Union County's UC STEM, which is sponsored by the Union County Freeholders. And this is the third year that they participated as part of the STEM program. And the kids were awesome. 27 schools participated throughout the county. And it was public, King University, and they spent the day there. They fed them really quite well. They had a nice breakfast and a nice lunch. And the kids actually got to meet each other for the first time. They were broken up into teams. And they presented a project, a service project, which will be introduced to all of the schools. And the service project will be presented and they'll acquire different things for whatever they decide to do. It was really an awesome experience. They pitched them, and there are five of them. And they were supposed to, at the rework, have a winner, but, and it's done through social media, and students are all supposed to vote on it. But they will have the winner announced at the Union County Freeholder meeting on the 14th of January. So I'll let everybody know who wins. But the kids really had a, huh? I'm not sure.
They're not school-based teams. They're.
They're not school-based teams.
They're random.
They're random. That's why they're recounting everything. So that's why it was not done at the rework, I guess. So that's where we're sitting. So I would let you know.
Great, thank you very much. Calvis, any?
Yes, happy to be here, everybody. And Mrs. Belloni, welcome aboard. And Ray, welcome back aboard. I didn't have a really bad.
I have one more thing to say. Listen, with this board approval, some of our kids were out of park. They hit the home run in the ballpark. And those kids are not being worth it. Despite the controversy at my house, my kids here on my side, my wife's side, and that kid went out there and performed. Let's do something for those kids.
Okay, I would like to wish everyone a happy new year and I could congratulate Teresa on her election. Congratulate my co-running mate, Mr. Alvarez. Although we've run together, we ran together. I also want to congratulate the baseball team on their big victory down in Florida. I guess they won three games down there?
Yeah, they won the tournament.
So they took the tournament. And I want to wish everyone a happy new year. That's it.
Thank you.
Belloni?
I just want to thank everybody for welcoming me. And I just ask that you have patience because I will have a billion more questions. And they're not meant for anything other than to try and get my head wrapped around all the massive responsibility here. And I thank you for being here. And congratulations to the other.
Thank you. I would want to congratulate Teresa coming aboard.
To one of the others.
And Ray also. Like I said, we're second family. So nice to be back.
I just want to wish everyone a happy new year and welcome back for the second part of the school year. Again, I want to congratulate Ray and Alex on your reelections. I think almost everybody here is extremely happy to have you guys back with us. And yes, this is our second family, so we are all, we're all in this together. And I also like to welcome and congratulate Mrs. Belloni on your win. And I don't think any question, I don't want anyone to worry about any questions. Ask as many as you want between any of the board members here. I think you know that we are always available for conversation. And senior staff here is fantastic. They all have open door policies that you can reach out to them anytime, either phone, email, or stopping in to say hello. Again, I think this board and this district is one big family along with the staff. So I think you'll get to see a wonderful side of everybody and everyone works well together. So please welcome and ask away. If there's no other questions, then I ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn.